Today's discussion is the Art of Telangana Vision 2047. As prosperous, inclusive and human society where every family regardless of income or background as a safe, secure and dignified home. Historically, Telangana has always contributed for provision of housing towards all sections in the state. With our government constructing over forty-two lakhs under old Indirama scheme. And now another three point five lakhs houses in progress under new Indirama Illu scheme. Housing Board and Rajiv Sagroha have also contributed to over one lakh middle income houses. However, there is a huge gap between demand and supply. So, time has come to move beyond individual schemes and to formulate a compressive affordable housing policy that can guide our action till twenty forty-seven. We are therefore working towards a Telangana Model Twenty Forty-seven. Where we aim to have a affordable housing policy with specific focus on needs in urban areas. That will be balanced financially visible, viable, socially inclusive and environmental responsible, technology driven etcetera. The Telangana Affordable Housing Policy will be in line with the Telangana Rising Twenty Forty-seven Vision with focuses on three major areas. Telangana core urban region focusing on some slums redevelopment, brownfield redevelopment, mixed housing, rental housing. In the peri-urban region focusing on satellite greenfield townships, integrated housing colonies with walk-to-work housing with strong consistency. In rest of the state region focusing on development of small and medium townships, rental and worker housing integrated with industrial parks, logistic hubs and emerging economic corridors. Our esteemed panel will help us answer three very questions in this regard. What must the government of Telangana do differently? What can financial institutions to do increase affordable housing finances? What commitment can private sector make to promote affordable housing? Friends, we are committed to talking the outcomes of the discussions behind this room into policy notifications, operational guidelines, model projects and budgetary decisions. Telangana has the vision, the institutional base and the economic strength to become a national and global example of inclusive urbanization. With our ideas, with your ideas and partnership, I am confident that the Telangana Model of Affordable Housing Twenty Forty-seven will not only serve our state but also offer learning and inspiration for affordable housing development. On that note, I once again welcome all of you to this session. Thank you for your presence and look forward to a rich and efficient decisions. Jai Hind, Jai Telangana. Please.
Honorable Minister Sir, thank you so very much for your kind and encouraging words. We all are excited about the prospects for housing in the state. And with your leadership, we are very confident that Telangana will reach newer heights particularly in the affordable housing segment. Thank you so much once again sir. With this, we'll start the panel discussion and as you are already aware, the panel consists of members from various facets of the housing sector. We are privileged to have the dean of the school and School of Planning and Architecture Delhi, which is the premier most institute in India for housing and development. Dr. Rao, if I could direct the first question to you sir. What are the opportunities and market gaps with regard to housing for all? This has been a topic which has been going on for many, many years. What do you think are the market opportunities and gaps at an India level and more specifically at the Telangana level sir?
Certainly, I think this is a very topical.
Sir, the mic can be a little closer to you.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Minister with your kind permission, I think this is a very, very important and topical subject that has been chosen for discussion today. Housing as we all know has a lot of forward and backward linkages. So, any investments that are made in the housing sector actually lead to greater economic opportunities in as many as about two hundred and thirty or two hundred and forty odd industries, both forward linkages and backward linkages. So, investments in housing would mean investments in a wide variety of other areas where there's a lot of employment opportunities that are going to be given to our people. Because without employment, there is no money and without money, there is no housing. Let's remember that. You have to have money if you want to buy a house whether you are a very rich person or not so very rich person. Some amount of money is always required and if you don't have that, of course, there are financial institutions and there are others who can always chip in and give you some loans and so on and so forth. The opportunity for the market, for the industry, I presume is what you are asking? Yes, there is a huge housing shortage in this country. We are only about forty percent urban. The last time we had a census was quite some time ago. But while we are waiting for the next census, we presume that we are about forty percent urban. So, we still have a large number of people living in the rural areas and we still have a lot of people who want to migrate into the urban areas because of the employment opportunities. Which means that whatever is the urban housing shortage which is in several millions is only going to increase in the times to come. Which means that the opportunity is humongous. There are some estimates that as of the year twenty twenty-two, the urban housing shortage, the total housing shortage in Telangana is about two point eight million out of which a major chunk actually happens to be in the urban areas and a very small percentage in the rural areas. This is obviously going to increase in the times to come when more people from the rural areas will come to the urban areas. Now, market opportunity, the government is already doing its bit. You have the Indirama Housing Scheme, you have the Andhra Pradesh Housing Board, you have the A P Housing Corporation Limited, they are doing a fairly good job. You have the Pradhan Mantraavas Yojana, Urban and Grammy Shari and Gramin. Some funds are coming from there, some funds are coming from the Harko as well. But is that enough? That is clearly not enough because we still have a large number of people living in the slum areas. Which are in not just Hyderabad but several other urban centers in the state of Telangana. So, what do we do with them? There is a huge corporate sector, real estate developers, we have members from the Kredai also here with us. And real estate developers are providing a lot of housing in the urban areas. But this housing is of course for the upper and middle income segment, can they also downmarket their products? Can they also provide for the lower income population who cannot afford maybe a three-bedroomed house but can perhaps afford a one-bedroomed house? Maybe something costing thirty lakhs, forty lakhs, fifty lakhs, why cannot they provide for it? Unfortunately, in our country, there is also luxury housing demand. So, developers obviously, they are in here for making money. So, they are catering to the luxury housing demand which perhaps is now more or less getting saturated. If you look at the inventory overhang, if you look at the vacant housing, there are figures where luxury housing is more or less now saturated. So, if developers want to remain in the business, then I think you better start building small, get into the one-room segment. I'll not use the word affordable, I'll not use the word low income because we don't want to go the nano way. So, I need only a one-room house. I could be a rich man, I could be a poor man, whatever. So, you have, you have products which are of a wide variety, wide range, wide ticket size, costing from twenty lakh, thirty lakh, forty lakh, going up to two crore and three crore. And whoever wants to buy whatever, they can come and buy. So, there is a huge unmet demand and there is a market opportunity here. And real estate developers, many of them are coming and buying. There are, of course, you all know as developers, there are incentives that are being provided both by the central government and the state government. Income tax concessions are there, stamp duty concessions are there. Almost all state governments now have affordable housing policies. I think Telangana one is on the anvil. I think we can actually learn from the other states' examples and we can maybe make out a better one. So, I think there is a great opportunity and the opportunity is actually in the numbers. So, build more and probably the very big developers may not want to come in. But there will certainly be a segment of developers who would want to build the one-room units and provide them at a much reasonable price. So, I am quite upbeat on this particular segment of the market.
Thank you, thank you Dr. Rao, thank you so much. Before we move on to the next question, Mr. Gotham.
So, thank you Professor Rao for your comments. So, we have amidst us a very august audience including our honorable Chairman of the Legislative Council Sri Guta Sukendar Redigaru and honorable Advisor to Government Sri Sudhresh Redigaru. Thank you for joining us in this discussion sir. We are proud to have you amidst here. And taking forward from what Professor Rao said, you know about the actual demand, I'd like to just pitch a couple of data points on that. Because our state has taken a pretty comprehensive house-to-house survey of the housing demand. And with a good app called Indirama App where we have gone house-to-house and captured the demand including the present living conditions, including the, you know, what kind of a housing structure they are in and also capturing their socio-economic factors. So, we still have an unmet demand in urban areas, an unmet demand of twenty point three-three lakh in the L I G slash E W S segment and eight point seven-seven lakhs in the M I G segment. And yes, total of twenty-eight lakhs, eight lakhs in M I G and twenty lakhs in L I G E W S. And in fact, these are not people who are completely dependent on government subsidy. Of course, E W S government will be, I know, catering to and government, this government is very, very committed as part of the Indirama Illu scheme. But you know, there is a lot of purchasing power but the bracket of, the supply in that bracket is missing. That is what is reflecting in this demand. So, I just want to place these facts before the panel, I request Pritam to take.
Sure, 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 Mr. Gotham, thank you so much for highlighting those statistics. So, I'll quickly move on to the president-elect for Kredai National, Mr. Ram Reddy. Sir, from the industry standpoint, you just heard the statistics shared by Mr. Gotham. He said there is a latent demand for about twenty-eight lakh houses. So, eight lakh houses in the M I G segment and about twenty-odd lakh houses in the L I G segment. How is the industry viewing this? How are you looking at this opportunity? How can you as the leader in an industry body motivate the private sector to participate in this opportunity sir?
Yeah, thank you Pritam. Sir, thank you so much for giving that figures, twenty-eight lakhs, it's a really, it's a surprise to us. I mean, the demand, what you are talking about it. Yes, Kredai plays a role, I mean, across the state, we have fifteen chapters. So, every chapter have a big connection with the Kredai Telangana state. So, that housing demand today, you talk about especially middle class. So, affordable housing, there is a definition of forty-five lakh rupees is a cap. And sixty square meter in metros and non-metro is ninety square meters. This forty-five lakhs cap was decided eight years ago. So, today in forty-five lakhs, you are not getting those affordable houses. The definition of affordable housing has to be redefined. So, this we have been giving the representation from Kredai National multiple times. Hopefully, I mean, this time also we met the honorable Finance Minister, then Housing Minister. Possibly, this budget, we are expecting that limit of affordable housing going to be increased. That is very, very, very much required sir. I request the honorable Minister from your side also has to push for this sir. Otherwise, so the very basic affordability, where we are getting, the land prices have gone up, the construction costs gone up, everything has gone up. Inflation, you can see, eight years inflation, if you take every year, I mean, five to seven percent inflation is there. If you take that also, it comes to seventy-five, eighty lakh rupees. So, this we have been continuously talking to the governments. But hopefully, this time, I think after talking to them, we got some positive note and we are definitely going to have this. So, affordable housing definition, then concessions has to be given. Even in the cities like Hyderabad, if you want to build an affordable housing, so land prices are so high. So, getting affordable is very, very challenging sir. So, I request the government has to look into this and provide some lands to the developers and a PPP model. So, that developers will come forward and they will build so many affordable houses, then they will be having their own business models. So, this will definitely will encourage the developers and it will become easy for you to also cater to so many ways sir. So, definitely your, yeah, thank you.
Good idea, definitely will work out it that way also.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Yesterday, Pritam was mentioning about the old, I mean, what do you call, all housing board houses were there.
Example, Kokatpalli.
Kokatpalli housing, there is a prime area today.
Ground plus three present.
Yeah, if you make it a PPP model, definitely it's going to give a big, big boost to the, I mean, this affordable housing sir. Thank you so much.
Great, great. Mr. Ram Reddy, you stolen a couple of questions that I had but it's good that we got a response from the honorable minister as well. I'll quickly move on to Abhijit from the World Bank. Abhijit, the honorable minister spoke about the financing opportunities and available of funding for the housing sector. How does World Bank come in and support state governments, the private sector and ultimately the end users and buyers? You know, how are you able to participate in this value chain? And if you can talk about some successful partnerships that you have managed both in India and outside India?
Thank you Pritam. First of all, I'd like to thank the government of Telangana for inviting us and for organizing this panel discussion. So, from the World Bank group's perspective, which includes both the World Bank, the I F C and M I G, which is our private sector financing arm and guarantee arm respectively. We generally look at engaging with, you know, our government counterparts in four areas when it comes to housing. One is land, one is permissions, third is infrastructure and fourth is financing. So, you asked me very specifically about financing, maybe I'll elaborate that a bit more than the others. But just to give you an example because I think the president-elect of Kredai, Mr. Ram Reddy also mentioned this. So, land is critical because it adds to the cost when the private sector needs to come in, right? And from land perspective, there are two things. So, land costs near the core of the cities are high like he was mentioning. And land costs away from the city in the suburbs, we heard about the O R R and the areas outside the O R R which would be developed are more affordable. So, there it becomes important to ensure the connectivity to these locations, right? Brownfield redevelopment, yes, definitely looking at land parcels which are not giving the economic returns. You can look at reconstruction, you can look at PPPs like you mentioned. But for the affordable housing to be constructed for people who are going to work mostly in the peripheral areas, maybe linked to some industrial areas etcetera. The second is permissions. So, the second major cost comes usually in terms of both the planning permissions and the permissions for change in land use, right? And these are two areas which I think the government can come in. I know the government of Telangana has already done a lot in these two areas. But this is an area that we work with different state governments in India, specifically in Tamil Nadu as well as other countries in identifying the bottlenecks and finding the solutions. The third is in terms of the infrastructure. So, the infrastructure is important. We have some housing projects in other countries where the component of infrastructure, so water supply, sewer etcetera, connectivity through mass rapid transit systems is more than the actual house construction component, right? Because once you are able to provide serviced land at certain locations, the private sector will automatically come in, pick it up and you know, deliver what is required in terms of the supply. And the fourth is of course in terms of financing. So, in financing, we, World Bank as well as other multilateral institutions, we look at both the demand side as well as the supply side. So, recently in our engagement in Tamil Nadu, we had a four hundred and forty million dollar engagement. There, the government was keen to move away from being a provider to becoming more of an enabler. They were already enablers but more of an enabler. And one of the things that was done was setting up of this shelter fund which allows long-term tenure financing at market rates but quite comparable to, you know, scheduled commercial banks. Especially for developers who are interested to come into the affordable housing section but probably don't have the credit profile to get attractive financing rates from financing institutions, commercial financing institutions. So, this kind of a facility which was promoted by the government was the equity of World Bank, A D B and the government of Tamil Nadu has helped both rental housing as well as ownership housing. And since I mentioned rental housing, the honorable minister mentioned the twenty-eight lakh, or rather, Mr. Gotham, you mentioned the twenty-eight lakh demand. So, in terms of meeting the gap, I think it's important to look at rental housing as well as one of the options. The focus should not exclusively be on ownership housing. So, let me just stop.
Yeah, so, Abhijit, I had a specific question on rental housing, maybe we'll come back to that topic in a few minutes. We also have another stall word from the financing industry, the ex-C M D of Harko sir. But sir, allow me a couple of minutes, I'll come back to you. The next question I want to direct to both the developers from Hyderabad, Mr. Nanda Kishore and Ajitesh. How are you both seeing Telangana and Hyderabad's residential housing market supply and demand situation? And what factors will play a critical role for the private sector to operate in all budget categories? We are seeing more and more developers playing in the upper-middle income category etcetera. How do we make sure that, you know, everyone participates in all budget categories?
First of all, thank you for having us here. At the outset, I would like to say the land prices being out of board in Hyderabad are being overplayed in my view. Actually, if you see barring a couple of pockets, the land prices have, are not as exorbitant as they are made out to be. If you look at Kokapet, if it is hundred and fifty crores there, every kilometer you move away from there, the price drops by almost six to seven crores per acre. And by the time you reach Patanjur, it would be around twenty, twenty-five crores per acre. And if you look at the F S I cost, I think it would still be within a decent range of say a thousand rupees to fifteen hundred rupees a square feet. Which is, I think, a pretty much a fair expectation even if you look compare with cities like Bangalore and other cities. But what is most important here is, we have to see, understand what is affordability. Affordability, while the government has defined as a certain budget of forty-five lakhs and all that. For me, affordability is to be looked at from an individual household perspective. If a house, if a household is able to finance their E M I with forty percent of its household income, then it is affordable to them. So, that way you have to categorize the people into various brackets like E W S, L I G, M I G, H I G and all that. Now, one of the, in the E W S category, I think come whatever, I think there have to be different models developed for that. And one of the biggest points what I would like to make here is that Hyderabad has got almost close to two million people in the slum areas. If Google is to be believed, now two million people in the slum areas would roughly translate to around four to five lakh households. Now, how do you do that? I think this is where we need to borrow the model of Mumbai. The model there has matured a lot and I am sure in most of this slum redevelopment, there will be many developers who would be more than happy to participate in this slum redevelopment. And I think we can adopt the Mumbai model here to do for that. And one of the prerequisite of course for this would be that government will have to ensure that there are other government lands which are made available so that developers can build transit camps where, you know, people can be temporarily located and then brought back once these developments are complete. And also, there is another aspect that we also have to consider is that bulk of these home buyers, if we were to get into greenfield projects, if developers are to get into greenfield projects, bulk of these home buyers have a problem of credit availability. Housing finance companies will not be able to finance them. And I think that is where the government intervention becomes very important. They have to perhaps give some kind of a credit guarantee to cover the lender's risk. And I was talking to a developer in Mumbai almost fifteen years ago who had done in Karjaat, he had developed this affordable housing. One of the biggest problem he faced was that there were the people who bought homes were not able to pay the subsequent installments and that puts a huge risk to the project as a whole. I think that is where the government can again intervene. Apart from that, what the government can also do is give the developers incentives, I would say, I would say more than the developers, I would say the home buyers incentives by way of stamp duty exemption, which is again a substantial cost, we don't have a separate. And of course approvals, as everybody says, there has to be a separate body which will give approvals whether it is an S R A development or whether it is a development of affordable housing, there has to be a separate body who has to do that. And it has to be a genuine single window system. I mean, it should be something which operates truly as a single window system. One of a easier solution would be where a government has huge land tracts outside on the periphery of the city, right? So, what I suggest sir is that if we can identify large land parcels across the four corners of the city, the government can do the designing, concept development and master planning of those lands. All the government has to do, once they have done that, and provide, create the trunk infrastructure also. So that the developers don't have to run for, you know, taking approvals or permissions. All they have to do is that, we can tell the developers, okay, you develop here this much of area, you get these concessions or benefits elsewhere in the city. So, I think that is something like what we are seeing in Mumbai, that thing can also be adopted. So, that will, so the developers, one of the reason the developers are not coming forward is mainly because they cannot do the running around, they cannot focus their energies on developing low margin, low profit areas. And it will be, it will be unfair and impractical for us to expect that private capital will make sacrifices. So, I think the government has to do those master planning and developments across all locations in the city and the developers will be more than happy to come and participate. Similar to what you said now, in which state it is going now? Sir, I understand it is happening in Mumbai, they are doing in. Any that type of document. Yeah, in Hyderabad also, they have done something similar. Secretary. Yeah, I will definitely, actually, I've been interacting with Mr. Gotham a lot and we have lot of conversations. And I can see there is a genuine interest to do something really good and we'll be more than happy sir. If it's really good, definitely this government is also thinking that way. Yes sir, that's what I'm seeing, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Nanda Kishore, Jeeth, thank you, thank you honorable minister. Ajitesh, can you quickly come in and can I restrict your time to about two odd minutes please?
Sure, see first and foremost to understand this entire landscape, right? Am I audible now? Yeah, see from the government side, government has land reserves in the city, core city area, right? Some of them are greenfields, some of them are brownfield. Greenfield land parcels, government has to auction at, and you know, we need to allow the market to realize its potential. By not doing that, essentially, we are eating into the balance sheet of the government. So, government, I think the main innovation can come around brownfield land ownership or what we call slums. If something can happen around easily establishing ownership in the slums. Because see as it is, if you look at the slums, we have maximum an F S I consumption of maybe one, one point five. Whereas in the west of Hyderabad, we go up to ten F S I. So, the F S I is a very beautiful concept, which is one of the biggest reason why still things are affordable. Let me share one small data point. In the prime region of Hyderabad, at a macro scale, an average house cost per S F T around eight, eight and a half, ten thousand rupees, like let's say Gachiboli. In Bangalore, an equivalent sort of area, house cost twenty thousand rupees, in Gurgaon, it's twenty-seven thousand. So, Hyderabad is currently the most affordable city in the country. That's to start with. Why we are there fundamentally because of the high F S I regime. Now, second thing, when many people say, a lot of. Now, second thing, when many people say a lot of things with FSI, first of all, there is no unlimited FSI in Hyderabad. If your property is abetting a forty feet road, you can only build seven floors. If your property is abetting four lane road or eighty feet road, you can only build fifteen floors. Only if your property is abetting a six lane road or an eight lane road, you can build like multiple floors. And a big road can accommodate all of this traffic. And second thing, see, this has become a market force. So we need to make policies which become market force. So when it comes to affordable housing, we have to work on how, see essentially the slum lands, whatever lands have gone for the slum today are, in a way, are catering to the affordable demand in an unorganized manner. We are trying to make it organized. So the FSI advantage exists, we need to just work around the ownership things. There is no additional capital commitment for the government or for the private sector. Next, I do agree with one of the esteemed panelists that yeah, I think housing for all, we need to focus more on the rental ownership side, rental side, not on the ownership. Because the problem with ownership is it's going to cost a lot of money. Let's say somebody is earning nine lakh rupees per year, right? And I'm taking a home loan of twenty-five to twenty-seven lakhs, I'm going to spend half of my money just paying my EMI. I can't live with that. See, households which are earning less than probably ten to twelve lakhs per annum, a good amount of expenditure will go towards healthcare and education. They should not be wasting money on the, the side. So a good rental housing scheme if you bring in, where the cap rates fall anywhere around seven to eight percent, then you will have lot of demand. And also there are major global financial institutions like IFC Washington and ADB and these things who are giving fund exclusively for it. So capital is available. I think we just need to solve little bit of the supply chain. Government side innovation lies around land ownership. As private sector, our role involves in, on the supply chain side. So we need to invest in R and D to bring down the cost of construction. I think the future is going to head in the direction of precast. So we need economies of scale, I think we will be getting there.
Absolutely, Ajitesh, thank you so much. We will come back to precast and other construction technologies as well if time permits, but it's the right time to introduce Mr. Suresh, the former CMD of Hattco. Sir, you heard all the panelists, everybody is talking about finance and credit availability and rental housing etcetera. With your vast experience sir, how has Hattco been an enabler for this entire sector and what is going on? What are your suggestions and recommendations to improve the supply in the affordable housing category?
Thank you very much. Very nice to get the views and more importantly, I'm happy to hear from the honourable minister, a very clearly sequential type of housing approach in the core of the city, in the outer area, peripheral area and small and medium town. Because the whole state housing is a very major one. And that's a, it's a right approach because that really brings the right level of inputs more so because the cost of land in those particular case, the third category will be much lower, which is also a point brought out by many people here. Now, but what is interesting is that the, as far as Hattco as a financial institution is concerned, not only during my time earlier but even continuously the present team also, we have the regional chief of Hattco sitting inside the one. And I'm very happy, due to current year only around one lakh forty-five thousand houses for the rural area, which he has indicated, has already been done with about five thousand crores and about ninety-five thousand urban houses have been also funded with substantial amount of money. And if I'm not mistaken, by January, another major project is also going to come. Of the order of around, around fourteen, fourteen thousand crores of money is coming into the housing segment in, in Telangana, I'm only talking in Telangana one. And that particular thing covers not only the housing component of the weaker section but also the low income one. The, I got a really, the honourable minister as well as Gotham G is there, they're on a fantastic job of actual delivery of houses of, of the order of around nearly three lakhs houses to be taken up and implemented. It's not an easy thing to deliver and they have been able to do that. And that's equally important one because funding institution would be happy to fund, provide you able to good delivery coming and also do it on time, cost and quality. And if you're able to do that, financial institution will be very happy to extend funding in the sector. And Telangana is doing extremely well and not only through Telangana Housing Development Corporation, Telangana Housing Board. And equally important is a contribution on housing coming from my brother sitting on the left, the private sector is contributing well. Around three hundred big developers are there in Hyderabad nearby, around eight hundred, around five hundred are there in other, in Telangana from other side. So contribution of the private sector is an equally important component of housing that will be coming. So contribution by the public sector primarily on the low income housing and weaker section housing, they have a weaker section housing program, a big trust being given. And I want to really give a salute for that and for the great initiative, not only in policy framework but also in actual implementation through good cooperation using the, I was very happy, the gentleman who came with me to escort me, he's dealing with the urban housing, even up to the nine story development in the heart of the city through the GHMC. They are doing five hundred sixty square feet houses of the order of eight lakhs, it's pretty good. Eight lakhs to be done with that particular cost, land cost leave it out, but that's a different issue, but is being done very well. And therefore, different type of component where the land is very intense, you go a little high rise, maybe around six, six or seven stories and maybe where land is not so costly, you can go to two or three story to four story development. The differential approach is also very good. And therefore, the funding is coming in a big way, there is no problem in that sector. And there are also opening in the private sector, we, we stopped it in between for some time. Now, opening the real estate sector to the private sector agency is also a new initiative that Sanjay Kulshresh has done, the new CMD has done. So that will be also good news for funding. Of course, in addition to Hattco as an agency, large number of housing financing institution are there for the lending, on the retail lending. Because when developers put the money, the whole housing cost is done through the housing home loans with reasonably good rates of interest and of the order of even eight percent, eight point five percent rate of interest with the EMI coming still for every lakh of loan, less than around thousand rupees for every one lakh of loan is pretty good. And you're having, and with the latest announcement which is given by the government on RBA's new interest rate policy, you can expect all the housing financing institution to bring down the housing loan also to slightly some extent also. I do not think that should be a problem. It's a, delivery is an important one, that's where they score well. The ministry is there, the secretary is there, MD is there. If you're able to deliver well, implement it on time, good technologies you brought in, that's where financial institution will be very happy to put any amount of money. I do not think that's a problem. But the big number, that number which is about twenty-eight lakhs that he said, covering the high income housing plus also the low income and weaker section there. One suggestion which I'd like to add with all that the honourable minister is here, if you're able to do something on land assembly and also infrastructure being led, the honourable ministers which states are doing that, then ask the private sector to come and join on a public-private partnership basis. Not only the pure public sector doing, pure real estate sector doing, do some projects on public-private partnership. Haryana has done that in a big way. Maharashtra has done in Sitco and the new township in Nashik and Nagpo. West Bengal has done some project, including equity participation on company also, just by the way. So that model is also there. So public-private participation of working where the government is good for land and infrastructure, private sector is good for design and implementation. So we can do to that particular company also in a big way. So I know there will be a lot of many questions coming, but that's an immediate answer I can give. And as far as the government of Telangana's massive program of housing is concerned, the vision that you have put sir, we are there to fully support that particular program. Not only for that, I understand the new township that's going to come in this very location there.
Same place.
Bharath. The Hattco is already coming in a big way to fund that, including all the other infrastructure for water supply and other related, because infrastructure is a larger component, which is also an important component that will come on that. Possibly, if you're able to make the land and development cost, say around thirty percent of the total cost. Why is it going from four thousand rupees a square feet to ten thousand rupees in Hyderabad? It is the cost of the land cost that's coming. Opportunity cost of land is where that's coming. We should bring that down to around thirty-five percent, then the building construction cost can be around, that can only happen if new landmarks, a good suggestion which you gave over there, I agree. If with infrastructure we do that, I'm sure they will deliver. Because construction cost in any case is not more than about two thousand five hundred, about three thousand rupees. Even at the best possible specification, it will be around two thousand, two thousand five hundred rupees. It is a, it is a opportunity cost of land that is really making the particular thing get into that ten thousand level and twelve thousand, a good point that was suggested over, he's still, he says, as he says, Hyderabad and environments are still much better than other metro cities that you have over there. I, I'll stop at that point.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Suresh. We love your energy and we love your articulation.
Thank you.
You know, we wish, yeah, a louder round of applause will be great. Thank you so much. Dr. Rao, if I can come back to you and Ajitesh, you brushed upon the topic of precast housing. So Dr. Rao, you know, from urban planning and urban design principle, you know, have you seen instances where urban planning tools have been used to augment supply in the housing sector? Are there any tricks in the trade that can be employed by the governments, you know, in Telangana specifically to augment supply? And Ajitesh, if you can follow it up with construction technologies apart from precast, what else can fasten construction and bring in supply quicker into the market? You know, even Mr. Ram Reddy and Nand Kishore can add, but Dr. Rao, we'll start with you.
Yeah, so I think one of the fundamental requirements is land assembly as very rightly pointed out here. Very recently, I was in Bangalore and I was talking to the people in the Karnataka Housing Board. There, what they have done is that instead of going in for direct land acquisition, they brought all the landowners together and they have come into an agreement with the landowners. And there's a public-private partnership model where there's an agreement and there's a sharing and the private sector is coming and Karnataka Housing Board, they're doing a lot of housing. And the people are very happy there because the landowners are also getting some amount of benefit out of this. So rather than going in for, like in some states.
Same concept here is also planning now, in some ORR and in between DRRR.
Okay.
We are planning same thing.
A similar kind of a public-private partnership?
Approaches and everything, also roads, radial roads, everything also, already planning ongoing, works going.
Okay, that's very nice. The, the other thing is, a mention was made about FSI. So the floor area ratio is very, very important. You need to get the maximum out of the limited land that's available. So, I know, I know, just now that has been said, so it depends upon the road weights. So you can also do a kind of a cross subsidy wherein if, if a developer does affordable housing, then he can get an incentive FSI like they are doing in the case of Mumbai, where lands which are occupied by the slums, the developer can come in and then there's a slum rehabilitation authority, SRA is happening there. So there are those ways by which you can enhance the efficiency of utilization of the limited land that is available so that you can, you can accommodate more in the limited land that is available. So this FSI incentive is I think very, very important. And of course, there are other financial incentives, I don't have to talk about that, it is all.
Sure, sure, thank you sir, Ajitesh.
On, on the cost of construction, I think you can. I see, I think prefab is for the foreseeable future, prefab, prefab would be a good investment area. Again, there's robotic construction and 3D printing, but it's in very early stage technology and frankly, not a very good solution for us here because we have to go vertical, especially in the west, land availability is high, so you can go horizontal. So yeah, we need to invest in prefab tech and any tech which will help us in going vertical construction. And probably sort of, see even in prefab also, the more important things are the viability is, question is coming, especially from the point of you have transportation of these materials. If something can be done around the transportation costs or maybe some sort of yard or manufacturing plant sort of, because these are all concealed plants, so they are not environmentally pollution contributing. If you can make some of those plants on different directions of the city, then the transportation cost comes down. So that is what I would recommend. And even the schools like, we have construction worker training schools can start working on these problems because labor training also becomes sort of important in this.
Yeah, so I'll bring in Mr. Ram Reddy there sir, he spoke about worker training and school. So what is the industry body doing about faster construction, cheaper construction, at the same time taking care of the skill development in this sector?
Yeah, especially about the skill development, Credit National has a tie-up with NSDC, CSDCI. So lot of programs have been conducted across the country. Every city chapter, I mean, people are coming for giving their training. Because these days, you know, how, I mean problematic about the skilling. So no mason want his son to become a mason, no carpenter want to become his son as a carpenter. So now government also is supporting them in many ways. So there is no problem for them to, their livelihood. So that's how nobody is willing to come for the work. So now as a developer, we have to give them some pride to work. So already we are giving lot of facilities. Earlier, they were, their living condition was completely different. Today, the living condition have been improved a lot. So I mean, and their dressing style, all those things, I mean, it's been changed, people are just feeling that yes, I mean, instead of calling as a laborer, we are calling them a worker. So that way, some better things are happening. So apart from that, cost of construction to reduce, especially majorly bulk production of the precast. So it has become precast is a, not a great solution today because, so there's no users for that. There are some challenges in figure, I mean, going for the construction. So those challenges has to be addressed further. And when it comes in a huge volumes, definitely it's going to become a, I mean, cost effective. I, I just give an example, when vitrified tile came in, I think twenty years ago, when I used it was hundred and ten rupees per square feet. First I purchased, but today you know how it is when, even you are getting it a forty rupees also. Because the volumes, the technologies, the speed of production, all these things are happening. So in the construction also, we need that, speed is very important. And even you have to encourage those industries to establish. So the, again, establishing industry, we are facing some challenges. So those challenges has to be addressed. More people has to come for the industry and more use, I mean, many has to adopt the new technologies. Already you have seen every seven days, you are going to build a, I mean, one floor of slab, those signals have been there. We have seen, we are evolving, I mean, from a concrete mixer to, from gomela to gomela, then hoist, then cranes and all those things are coming. So future is definitely is for the technology and lot of research has to take place in the technology also. So to reduce the cost, technology is the only biggest solution. Thank you.
Lovely, lovely. Kishori G, your thoughts and then we'll move on to Mr. Suresh. He had some inputs on technology as well, please sir.
See, I think from a technology perspective, what gets manufactured in the factory on a repetitive basis will obviously be the cheapest compared to what gets done in situ. So if you look at China, I think bulk of their homes are manufactured in the factory and they're just assembled at the site. So it's an assembly line process that they follow. I think that is something which we need to replicate and that is a much larger issue. But what is most important, I think, apart from the construction cost and technology, I think the cost of building a home, one, time is a very significant factor and as I mentioned, if the government can facilitate a scheme or a policy wherein the time is cut down, I think that is going to add a significant benefit to the, I mean, bring down the cost. The second is the financing of the construction, the developer finance for affordable housing. I think here again, cheaper finance, I think like, much like what the central government has done with the Swami Fund, which is doing an amazing job in the stressed asset portfolio. I think the same thing, if something that is similar can happen in the, for affordable housing, I think that is another big advantage. And the third advantage is the GST on construction. Now whether you are building an affordable housing or you are building a regular housing, the GST from a construction side is the same. While the buyer is getting only GST at one percent, but for the developer, the GST on the construction is still the same. If that can be brought down substantially, then I think this will bring down the overall cost of construction. Add to that, if the state government, I'm sure if they can do something and bring down the approvals cost, which is again today similar, and also certain other parameters like, you know, the parking requirements, irrespective of the kind of homes you are building, the parking requirement still remains the same. I think these are some areas where we can walk around to bring down the overall cost of construction by reducing the time, by certain interventions from the government and certain use of technology and also by bringing down the approvals cost and timelines and all this. I think this is, everything has to fall in together. And of course, as I said, finally eliminate or bring down the land cost component as much as possible. That, that's, that's.
Thanks, thanks Kishori G. Suresh sir, over to you, you had some thoughts on technology?
Yeah, I, I think it's an important one at the, at the. Yeah, I think it's an important one at the, at the end of the day, it's going to be construction and, and the way in which things are going on, the cost of construction is component of building materials as well as the labor component there. On an average, if it is going to be in the urban component, about seventy, thirty, between the building material cost and the labor component there. And this is also the second largest employment generation, housing in over there, you're, you're about five crore construction workers and that's a very major area next to agriculture. So if you are able to give a big trust for the construction workers who are dealing mason, carpenter, barbender, plumber, electrician, around sixty-five trades are there, tile layer, glass fixer, painter, et cetera, et cetera. And if you are able to do a big job, at one point of time, somewhere in the late nineties, there were good moment was the National Network of Building Centers, which is or Nirmiti Kendra or Nirman Kendra, we said that, primarily a technology transfer center, a skill upgradeation center, a manufacturing center for products of precast there and also housing guidance center and also construction workforce, a five-in-one job. And fortunately, Telangana has done good in the Nirmiti Kendras also in a big way, but I do not know at this point of time, it's still going on well or not, but it will be good to reason, especially your program outside in the rural, rural component of housing and small and medium towns, tier two and tier three cities, we should strengthen that particular component and that will give better, in which case wastage will be lower, quality of housing will be better and we should strengthen in that. And I also agree with him, precast is a very important component. He suggested that in the beginning over there, we left it, there are lot of good initiatives coming in this country with including 3D housing, the whole thing. But you require good volumes coming there, committed volumes are required in that particular area and previously we thought that we have to do in a factory and bring it all the way to the site there, travel cost and all that. But now there are lot of technology, we can do it, also the manufacturing component and the very site itself, many companies have done. But I agree, the economies will come where the wall, if you are able to do, even today I find large number of good construction with prefab which are being done over there of the order of around thousand eight hundred to two thousand rupees a square feet, as against casting. See, time is the most important one. If cast in, in, in situ construction, if it takes about two and a half to three years for a project of twenty, thirty storied building, you can do the same thing in about one year time period and that's an important component. Interest during construction is a very major component there, if you are able to do that. But we should have an enabling environment to support that. But skill upgradeation and training through the National Academy of Construction here, Nikmarso unit here, the creditized training institutes, all the together along with the building center movement or Nirmiti Kendra movement can give a big thrust. Take my word, as the Honorable Minister is here, sir, this is one area which can have a major, major impact for the large construction workforce which are there in Telangana, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Mr Suresh. Abhijit, if I can quickly bring you in back to the rental housing topic, a few speakers spoke about rental housing and I think there is a consensus amongst the panel that everything cannot be for purchase supply. What has been World Bank's experience, how has World Bank enabled rental housing? Because the economics in India is quite different and very difficult, right, for rental housing to work. So your learnings and suggestions there, please.
Thank you, Pitham. Before I come to rental housing, I'm just going to take two minutes and probably reflect on some of the discussions. So blended financing was one of the thoughts that came up and this is something that many countries have done successfully. We have done this in Brazil, we are doing this in Kenya, looking at providing catalytic risk financing support or looking at providing credit support to developers. So both sides can be looked at. I think I just, the main point I want to say is that when a multilateral agency is getting involved, it need not be in terms of direct financing, it can also be in terms of a guarantee, right? Which means we are guaranteeing that if there is a problem that comes up up to a certain, after a certain threshold, then the guarantee comes into play. So there is a very minimal cost of guarantee. So the actual load of that guarantee on the cost is very, very low compared to say a pure borrowing. I just wanted to make that point because the government is doing his policy thinking. The second is transit camps is very important, but with transit camps, we've seen some states are now exploring with rental vouchers, right? So for a two-year period or one and a half to two-year period, a rental voucher of X amount is being given so that they can rent houses within, let's say, two to three kilometers of where they are located while the reconstruction goes on, right? And this rental vouchers, I'm flagging because as a long-term policy for the government to look at, a rental voucher policy has been experimented in places like Chile, in Indonesia, where effectively every migrant worker who is coming in, recognized migrant worker coming in, is given a rental voucher for three to four years. And that, over that period, then they graduate to say ownership housing, right? So that's another thing the government could consider. Linked to this is also the issue of the lowest brackets, the first, second, third, fourth deciles, the economically weakest sections and whether they have the affordability to buy, you know, a housing. And this is where the role of the affordable housing finance companies come in, right? Now with the affordable housing finance companies, the rate of interest is higher than let's say going to a formal. But we have seen, based on experience in Tamil Nadu, we have seen that people are able to afford and repay and the government comes in through two means. So one is they come in through a tripartite agreement between the AHFC, the government as well as the owner. And the second is there is a certain risk guarantee which is introduced by the government, which says that if you're not able to pay two-quarters EMI, let's say, we cover it, after that you will have to vacate the house. So that kind of a system can also be looked at. Now back to rental housing, the question that you asked.
Thank you.
So, sorry. So on rental housing, what we are experimenting, so you're right, the returns for the private sector to come in is not there, right? To come in from a pure rental housing perspective. So we are looking at a possible blend of grants. So grants which would come from various government schemes that were mentioned or grants that could come from other concessional sources for the construction cost, right? Which actually makes, reduces the cost at which the private operator operates the rental facility. So in Tamil Nadu, where this has been tried, the rentals without any concessional grants would be something around twelve to thirteen thousand, has come down to three and a half to four thousand. That is the impact that PMAY, ARHC window or they have the Working Women's Hospital Scheme which is running quite well now can play, right? So that is one thing I think every state now needs to look at. The second is industrial worker housing. So if we have, I mean, the previous session was on, was chaired by the Industries Department as well and we were talking of the industrial ecosystem, you know, growing. That ecosystem requires housing and rental housing is probably the best way to do it. So a tie-up between such industrial sites, industrial zones or even corridors were being, was being mentioned, new corridors are being set up, identifying affordable housing within those corridors, right? For rental housing, has the possibility because then the industrial estate comes in and subsidizes a part of the rent. So here the capital is not getting subsidized, the rent gets subsidized. So there are various models which can be looked at, which has been tried globally.
Thank you, thank you, Abhijit. We'll quickly move on to the private sector on the dais, starting with Mr Ram Reddy. Sir, we spoke about PPP fleetingly, you know, so how does the private sector and how does the industry body like yours, what kind of partnerships with government? You know, we talk about PPP which is private-public partnership. What models would the private sector be excited about? What models are, you know, foremost in terms of acceptability?
So mainly the government has to provide the land, then proper approvals, proper infrastructure. These three things are from the government side, then developers will come forward and definitely make a, whatever the, whichever the project is there, they're definitely going to be successful. Apart from this, but especially for affordable housing, the finance cost has to be definitely as Mr Nand Kishore mentioned, it has to be reduced. Now, any private developer getting a project funding, it ranges from, another the biggest or best developer is getting at ten percent, it goes up to even fifteen percent from private lending, I mean, non-scheduled banks. So that cost of funding is huge and even approval also is taking huge time. Every project, when, I mean, Minister Garg also is in the real estate, he knows how the approval process is there, that has to be simplified because a project when the land is purchased or took on a development by paying the huge advances, if it takes a year to launch the project, huge burden on the, I mean, finance cost will be there.
Sure, the timelines is very important.
Yeah.
For approvals, definitely government will take the, as early as possible, that positive decisions.
Yeah, thank you so much. Now Build Now has come, but still I'm, because it's not a criticism, but improvement, I'm talking about it, lot of improvements has to be taken place, definitely is going to big help because Telangana is a model for many because especially the GO number eighty-six where Shekhar Reddygar has put his best effort that, what is that, sky is the limit to construct, that is given a big boost to Hyderabad real estate. Why various developers across the country coming to Hyderabad means because of such resolutions. So even we talk across the country, our policies are great. So I mean, whatever Build Now and TS, I pass, all policies are great, but this is big scope for improvement because every permission we have to go to many departments, every department takes, every section, it takes a time. You know how much time it takes on that. So my, on this dais, I request the Honorable Minister, please look into this, definitely this is going to make a big game changer for us. The vision what twenty forty-seven is a great vision, three trillion economies going to bigger reality. Definitely it's going to be reality. The way in which in a shortest time, the way in which has been, even been conducted, really the MOs have been signed, really, I mean, lot of credit goes to the Honorable Chief Minister and the ministers like you. Really, I am very, very happy to be assist, whatever the, I mean, even the policies also across the country, whichever the best housing policies are there, from Gradai, I can definitely be some use of, use for you. I mean, I can get the information across the country and CBR is there to, I mean, create some vision document about the affordable housing. We are definitely, we'll be the shareholders in that, definitely whatever the best can be from Gradai, we'll contribute that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you. I can quickly go to Ajitesh and then I'll come to the Ramke group. So Ajitesh, your views on PPP models and partnerships with government, what are the most top of mind or most comfortable associations that private sector will accept?
See, I think first and foremost, I think this, the role of the stakeholder called the government is to, is to simplify the land side of things, right? Like one very, very good thing now we are seeing is auctions. Auctions is a good way, it is actually also PPP where the government is sourcing the land, cleaning it up and then auctioning it. So I as a developer need not worry about so many of the legal hassles. So that's one very good to start with, right? When it comes to pertaining particularly to the affordable housing, I think the slum one which I mentioned would be a good thing. The role of the private sector is to continuously work on cost reduction and cost reduction is going to come up as a function of economies of scale. As we have more bigger and bigger firms, we have bigger R and D, so naturally we'll have to go invest because as Honorable Secretary has been mentioning, we have three million shortage hours. So the market demand exists. Now the question is, how do we make a profit? That's the only question remaining. So I think, see, if, if it, if somehow twelve percent margin can be made, that's it, it's ripe for disruption. And also I would, also like my humble suggestion would be for policymakers is to focus probably less on subsidies because if you look Pan India under PM Awaz Yojan and various state government programs, broadly speaking, ten percent of, ten percentage of the overall cost subsidy has already been given and that's not really helping. I think we need to work more towards unlocking the market forces rather than the subsidies because subsidies is also a burden on the exchequer, the middle-class person who is paying the tax, it's a big burden on them. So maybe less subsidies and more market force orientation, unlocking market force will really help the entire, all of us moving forward. And another one point which I would like to just mention before I conclude is that see, housing is the most important sector, let me put some statistics. Pan India, we have two hundred and thirty million people working in the agri economy where average per capita earning is ten thousand rupees, right? Then we have seventy million people working in the manufacturing sector where average earning is seven, fifteen to seventeen thousand rupees. Then we have another seventy million people working Pan India in the housing and, you know, construction segment where the average earning is twenty-five thousand to twenty-seven thousand rupees. So for every one person who is working in the construction sector, two-point-seven equivalent people have to work in the agri sector, almost all one-point-eight people have to work in the manufacturing sector. So investing in housing under the, you know, visionary program of the Honorable Chief Minister to make our economy one trillion dollar by twenty thirty-four, investing in housing-related policies will greatly push forward the economy and create opportunity for the bottom end of the society thereby making them richer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ajitesh.
I think PPP in the housing or the real estate sector is always going to be a tricky thing because people look at land and mostly when we look at land, we look at it retrospectively. Are ye land dasal pele, you had given it for one crore or two crores. Okay, so that's always going to be a dicey thing, lot of governance, lot of scrutiny, lot of challenges. So I would suggest, you know, even in a PPP model, eliminate the land part like what Ajitesh was mentioning, let the government bring the land, not give to the developer, let the developer do, let the government do the facilitation part of it. I think let, rest be left to the, to the, to the private developers, let economics and profit drive the development. I think provide whatever enabling environment that you can. Also very important here is to understand is, on an average in a city, seventy percent of the land is occupied by residences, by residential development. And still we have, say in a city like Hyderabad, like two, three million people not living in quality housing, I think that is something which is not reflecting very greatly on the overall scheme of things. So somewhere there is something which is lacking. And if this really has to be addressed, it cannot be addressed just by large developers or just by the government, it has to be all sizes of developers who have to be part of it. And one way of doing that is we have to ensure the city spreads horizontally. We are talking of Hyderabad having unlimited land, unlimited land, but if you see, we are not growing beyond a certain boundary. One of the reason for that is lack of transport infrastructure. We have fantastic roads all around, but we don't have transport infrastructure, we don't have social infrastructure. I think that is where I would request the Honorable Minister and the government to... In transport now we are planning to metro line more than three hundred kilometers through third, first, second and third phase also.
Absolutely.
Definitely it will use full power in city.
Yeah, I think once that happens, once the transport infrastructure and the, and automatically the social infrastructure will start developing, then I think you will find lot more developers coming into these peripheral zones to develop the affordable housing. I think that is one area where the government can play a facilitating role, then directly be a part of the PPP model.
Thank you, thank you so much, Nand Kishoreji. So...
Just one point, just one like, one point I would like to add. I think the objective of the entire PPP model should be, government should not lose money, private sector should make money and people should find solutions. That could be the broader vision statement.
Nicely put, Ajitesh, nicely put. So we are almost nearing the end of the session. I will pass on the mic to Mr Suresh and then the Honorable Secretary will also conclude the session, but we want to throw the floor open for some Q and A. So if there are a few questions, you know, we will come to you, sir, the mics will come to you, but after Mr Suresh's commentary.
Yeah, I wanted to add one dimension to the whole because the whole thing is housing and we, I have here the President Shekhar Reddygar who is sitting over there in the front, he is also there, he is also the National Vice Chairman for the Indian Green Building Council. I just, I bring to your notice, the important comment, it is not just not four walls and a roof, how to make the home also green in a large way? Integrated water management, integrated energy management, integrated waste management, saving of, water saving, energy saving and good interiors coming, good green to be developed over there. And the Indian Green Building Council, the headquarters is only in Hyderabad and they done, and IGBC has done phenomenally well and you'll be very happy to know, out of nearly fifteen billion square feet of green, green development, which is about thousand five hundred crore square feet, mind you, thousand five hundred crore square feet, the housing component itself is of the order of around three billion square feet and that's about three thousand crores of housing, that's a very big number. And, and we have got ratings available for middle income, high income and affordable housing is a very major component. We have rating for affordable housing also. My suggestion is that in addition to the other components which you are discussing, also add on the dimensions of environment-friendly, ecologically appropriate, energy-saving and other features to be introduced in that. So the quality of the housing in addition...
So the quality of the housing in addition to just being walls and roof will also bring in a house to a home component of good quality being brought in. And I'm sure Shekhar Reddy will take over as the national chairman, like he will become the national president of Karadi in Hyderabad, both happening. Telangana should be able to do a very good thing for all the housing that you do in the by vision two zero four seven. Also to bring the dimension of green home as an important one. I thought I'll bring that because that discussion did not come so far. You talked of land infra, you talked of money, but not on the green component was not mentioned. And it's a very major area I G B C is contributing, it's available in Hyderabad and please do that also in a dimension. Thank you.
Sure sir, thank you so much Mister Suresh. Mister Gotham, if you have any, okay, so we'll throw the floor open for questions. So if we can have a couple of mics passed around please, yes please.
Can you hear me? This chief minister on Telangana Rising Summit in twenty forty-seven. I've heard a lot about develop more and more and more development for Hyderabad. What about the smaller towns? Why is it that we are neglecting the smaller towns which is where most of the people of in of of your state live and most of India lives? There are several win-wins that will happen if your focus as policymakers was on the smaller towns. What are the win-wins? We talked about job creation. You want job creation near to the locations where people are actually living, point one. Point two, you can actually use prefab in small towns, you can't use prefab to go high. In big cities you own, you cannot be using prefab and therefore you have to go high. If you don't go high, the problem is that you will have to keep developing infrastructure and metros etc. And your city spreads like this. This is the opposite of successful cities of the world. Paris, London, Japan's Tokyo, they are all co- they are concentrated cities and they rise like that. So the point is, we have too much concentration of people coming into big cities. We want people to be located in small towns and that's where the clusters are, the 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 M S M Es are located there. If you build clusters in small towns, you will actually be able to generate jobs not just for construction but for the 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 other econ- the other parts of the economy. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you professor.
In my opening remarks already I told you Andy, we in Hyderabad, in between O R R, triple R, in other out of three triple R. Our plan is state government planning is like that, definitely we are hundred percent do that thing.
Yes sir.
Just to what our honorable minister has said.
My name is Narshaya, I am the managing director of Shanta Sridham Constructions. I am developing affordable housing. But sir, honorable minister Garu, Miruguda Construction Line Low Naru, we are facing a lot of problem in developing an affordable housing. See practically state government is need not giving any concessions to any of the affordable housing. The person who is selling at twelve thousand rupees per square feet and a person who is selling at four thousand rupees per squ- per square feet, paying the same fees to the G H M C. And the same registration charges to the registration department. If you fix twelve hundred square feet plinth area, below twelve hundred square feet plinth area, affordable housing and fix a norm. You give a concession in registration charges, you give a concession in what you call municipal sanction fees. And you give concession in T D R with additional floors without T D R. And other zones like agriculture or anything, without any change a change of land use, you should be able to give affordable housing scheme without any questions. Then I think the problem will be every every private builder will come forward to do the affordable housing sir.
Thank you.
Sure, sure and mancha idea acharu, definitely government will think that way also.
Thank you very much sir.
Gotham sir, you wanted to respond to the earlier question as well.
So responding to Professor Malutra's uh points on the strategy for the smaller towns. As honorable minister said, the government is already, government has already taken up construction of houses in all these smaller towns. We have taken up construction of fifty thousand houses in the smaller towns itself. Already these projects are ongoing. And of course, this entire session was focused on Hyderabad and periphery for want of time and because the main intent of this workshop was a collaboration between the private sector and the public sector. So that was why the session was tailored like that. However, all your concerns are noted and government is very committed and very keenly working on those fronts. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll probably take one more question sir and please, please ask a question. Please mention who you want the question to be answered by and please do introduce yourself. Sir, please ask the question, you can stand.
Hello.
Yeah.
This my question is to the honorable minister and to the M D of the Housing Corporation. I represent here from National Institute of Rural Development, Panchaitaraj. I think Mister Suresh and other people are talking about the affordable housing. Second thing they are talking about the Nirmithi Kendras regarding the material availability other things. Sir, we what I found when you go to the affordable housing, we do not have the masons trained in this technology. So National Institute of Rural Development is giving a training on all these technologies. I think government of Telangana can utilize the services of N I R D P R to train all their masons in this affordable organization so that greenhouse building can be constructed. Second thing is Nirmithi Kendras. So it's a very good concept where the the material can be made available to the especially P M A beneficiaries. There is a major challenge they are facing with their own material. So there is a need to revive the Nirmithi Kendras so that they can build the technologies. And the what I I went to Nirmithi Kendra of Telangana, it's a defunct, huge area is there. So if you can revive it, I think they can take the help of N I R D P R in training people and doing this. So that we can build up the masons across the across the state so that the affordable housing can be taken place. So the government of Telangana can bring the masons of the state of the state to N I R D where we got a rural building technology park where different model houses are there. They can come and see and they can learn the various technologies that can available so that those technologies can be utilized and can be housing can be made affordable.
Understood sir.
This is my submission, thank you very much.
So just responding to your question. In fact, you know I am proud to say we have trained more than ten thousand masons before our Indirama program actually kickstarted on ground. This is primarily beneficial at construction and masons play a very crucial role in it. So recognizing this on a on the directions of our honorable minister, our residential training program for masons was done in N A C, National Academy of Construction. Which is under the ages of state government, it's a very premier training institute in the construction sector. And in fact, there were five day training was offered to masons on all the innovative construction technologies, innovative construction practices. And taking it from there, two people, so here we had trained two people from every block. So from five hundred blocks, two masons each had come here and we had organized two rounds of training. And taking it forward, the district branches of the National Academy of Construction organized training for masons from each and every grampanjath of the state. So in fact, putting together, we had trained more than thirteen thousand masons as part of the Indiramayal housing program. Over and above this, in each and every block headquarters, Mandal headquarters, we had sanctioned and constructed technology demonstration houses. Where we utilized climate friendly, thermally efficient technologies, roofing technology, you know walling technologies where materials, material construction costs could be saved. And these were exhibited to all the Indiramayal beneficiaries as well as masons, as well as the Indiramayal committees who are you know involved in this, you know overseeing the construction. So of course, we'll we are very keen to partner with N I R D P R as well in this front.
All right, thank you. Uh I think we have just so much time, maybe the last question to the gentleman who got up. After that we'll have to, I think lunch is waiting, so I'm sure everybody must be hungry as well. So quickly shoot the question sir, please.
Thank you sir, thank you. I'm Harsha from Isura, we manufacture tower cranes, we are based out of Hyderabad.
Sorry, you manufacture what sir?
Tower cranes. So my question is, we don't we don't see much of innovation in construction equipment industry in India. If you look at to bring in innovation, it's a highly capital intensive. Largely construction equipment are built of Chinese because they are largely backed by Chinese governments. So if you have to develop any sort of new product in terms of construction equipment, how can any Indian company come up and build? Kind of bring in the technology and innovation in construction equipment industry?
Who who are you directing this question to?
Government sir.
Mister Gotham, you want to, so he's asking how can the government support new technology in construction equipment?
See, when you talk about precast.
Yes.
To lift the precast material, you require heavy cranes. None of them are made in India, everything comes from China.
Okay, let me now respond to that. So even the gentleman from N I R D P R had also mentioned about our Nirmithi Kendras. In fact, we had a very thriving system of Nirmithi Kendras earlier in the old Indirama scheme between two thousand four to two thousand fourteen. Later these Nirmithi Kendras are not fully functional now, but in certain districts on the directions of the honorable minister. We have leased out the lands of the Nirmithi Kendras to private players, incubators like you, who are willing to come forward and establish innovative, you know, construction technologies, right? So some you know novel brick making units, low cost brick making units etcetera under you know prefabricated slabs for these individual houses. So we are ready to partner with private players, incubators, you know innovators like you with our Nirmithi Kendras. In fact, our minister was of the opinion that government must not be directly involved in material manufacturing. So we have these Nirmithi Kendras, we are ready to guide you, facilitate you, do the quality controls etcetera. And we are ready to partner with you know private players in this regard, in the construction technology front. And we have already partnered with certain players with respect to our demonstration houses. Because Telangana Housing Corporation and the H S W L A P Housing Corporation has always been a key player in pioneering new technologies and increasing the social acceptance of these technologies among the people. Because social acceptance is very important. So we had partnered with certain players in exhibiting this novel technology through our demonstration houses which we are constructing at each and every Mandal headquarters. And even now this opportunity is open, so we are keen to partner with any one of you in this regard.
Thank you, thank you Mister Gotham.
I would like to add one.
Thank you.
See, for young innovators, yeah, we have lot of use cases, like you want to automate tower cranes, right? So you can maybe reach me out on LinkedIn. Uh we will give you use cases and we are working with young entrepreneurs even to invest some capital and you know give business use cases and all of that. So yeah, we need to start working on automations around R M C manufacturing, autonomous tower cranes because finding workforce for tower cranes is a very big problem. So there are lot of these problems, yeah, we would love to you know partner on that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The honorable minister has consented for one more question, one one in the back, the person in the white attire sir, yes please.
Thank you Minister Garu. Uh the session is very nice, beyond my expectation. I had a Nirmitha Kendra, it's still working. I think before two thousand four I started with the help of the Hardko. And I manufacture also now, I think as Mr. Sinvas said, no, I was good in politics for what twenty-five years, I am now an industry only. We manufacture so many items which is suitable for precast as well as green buildings. I only wish that our minister should take lead in making every house as a green building. It's quite possible and it can be done in economical and our chairman Hardko has suggested that because the environment will be better. And the power savings will be there for a long. So we must take lead, the government should take lead in building the government offices and government buildings as green buildings. Because I have seen few green buildings in Bangalore by many of the leading world organizations and they are very nice. So we must go for that because the ambience of the residence should be very good as well as the schools, hospitals and all other buildings should be green buildings. You should make it a point of that and I am really happy to hear that word from our the chairman Hardko, thank you.
Thank you so much sir, thank you. Thank you and sir, for the want of time, we'll want to close the session. Please do try and meet the panelists of Dias.
So we welcome the honorable minister for tourism, Sri Jupali Krishna Rao Garu to this session. So thanks for you know participating in this session sir, we are honored to have you here.
And Mister Gotham, can you kindly conclude sir, please?
Yeah, so your suggestion with respect to green technologies is noted. So we'll try to, we are now constructing houses on a massive scale, you know, lakhs and lakhs of houses. Government is committed to constructing two million houses over the next decade. So we'll definitely incorporate a lot of these technologies, especially thermally efficient construction, which will reduce the cooling load in our houses.
Want to contribution sir?
Yes, so you know I'd like to thank all the panelists, all the esteemed panelists on Dias and all the esteemed delegates who have participated very keenly in this panel discussion. So for me personally, you know, it has been a very enriching discussion and our honorable minister was kind enough to grace this occasion and give his valuable time and valuable inputs throughout this one and a half hour session. So I'm sure under his leadership and under the leadership of a honorable chief minister, Telangana will create a future ready, scalable and inclusive, affordable and a sustainable housing model as a part of Telangana two thousand forty-seven. And dear friends, this government is very committed to provide affordable houses to all the economically weaker sections. However, no government however committed can on its own deliver the scale of affordable housing that we are talking about. As I just said, there is an unmet housing demand of over twenty-nine lakhs. And these are not all economically weaker sections. Even in several houses which we have allotted free of cost, people are investing at least two to somewhere at the minimum of bare minimum of two lakhs to maximum of ten lakhs in just getting these houses renovated. Because people are ready to invest, they have some purchasing power in hand. However, we need developers and builders who are willing to invest in affordable housing, banks and housing financing companies to support the necessary funding. Not only for the developers but also for the consumers who may not have the necessary eligibility criteria to meet the regular home loans. So we need dough tail products for the same. And we would request the assistance of multilateral institutions like the World Bank, from which Abhijit has joined us. So they can bring in the global best practices and also provide us the much needed capacity building support for government organizations like the Housing Board and the Housing Corporation. And of course, we need civil society organizations and community groups that can articulate the needs of the society from the demand side. What is it that people expect? What is their aspiration? What are their fears? What are their desires? So that is as much important when we talk about this affordable housing. And academia and professionals, you know, Professor Rao is here, you know, Suresh Garu is here. So they can contribute to better design, better technology, better productivity. So today's session is not merely a technical consultation, it's an invitation for partnership. It's an invitation for partnership towards achieving this noble goal of providing affordable housing for all. So our intent is very clear that the recommendations, the deliberations from this session will not merely remain on paper. We are committed to bring this into our affordable housing policy which is in the making and which will be you know released very soon. Maybe in a time span of two to three months. So with these words, I once again extend a warm gratitude to all the distinguished panels and participants. Thank you one and all.
Thank you so much Mister Gotham. If you guys like the panel, please do give a big round of applause. Thank you honorable minister sir, thank you special secretary housing and thank you for all the panelists. I enjoyed moderating the panel. all the panelists, I enjoyed moderating the panel and thank you so much for having me here.
Thank you so much sir for moderating and now, hello. Now I request Minister Garu to felicitate our panelists who are on stage. Mr. Vasudevan Suresh Garu, former CMD Harko. So, to all our guests, we proudly present the two iconic GI Tag treasures of Telangana, the exquisite Bhochampali Ikka shawl, renowned for their intricate tie-and-dye weaving embody the timeless skill of artisans. Complementing them are the vibrant Sherial masks handcrafted in the traditional storytelling style that carries centuries of Telangana's cultural heritage. Let us celebrate these GI-recognized art forms and the master craftsmen who keep our traditions alive. Mr. Abhijit Shankar Ray. Dr. P.S. N. Rao, ladies and gentlemen, we are presenting the two GI Tag mementos that you see here, one is the Ikka shawl and the other one is the Sherial mask, known from centuries in Telangana art form. Mr. G. Ramireddy Garu. And today's moderator for our session wonderfully moderated this session, I must say, Mr. Preetam Maharajee. Andarke lunchtime aayindi, nak delsu kani aaina, okasari chappatlaite, ausroon. So, ladies and gentlemen, with this we conclude this session of our panel discussion and thank you to all our dignitaries who are present on stage here. This session definitely enforces that inclusive growth is built brick by brick and every citizen should and must have an access for safe and dignified housing. Thank you one and all for joining us on stage. Thank you one and all for joining us on stage. Now, we take a short break here, a lunch break and exactly one hour later, we assemble back again here in Hall One for our next panel discussion, the team being the Bharat Future City as a magnet for three trillion Telangana. So, let's all join back again after exactly one hour, but before that, we have a special video which is going to be played for you that's called Indirama Illo. So, can we have the AV please?
For the first time in Telangana's history, a housing mission has emerged not just to construct homes but to build dignity, stability and hope. Welcome to the Indirama Housing Scheme, a transformative initiative designed to empower women and provide families with a true sense of ownership. This isn't just another housing project, this is Telangana's most ambitious flagship mission, personally guided by Honorable Chief Minister E. Ravant Reddy. Making housing a right, not a privilege. Across the state, a monumental three lakh thirty-eight thousand...